Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees. Dr. Grigsby will get us started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Green. It is my honor to introduce you to Ayla Hatcher. Ayla is a fifth grader at Casey Elementary under the leadership of Ms. Rhoda Yoda. She is a daughter of Ayadi and Laquita Hatcher and big sister to Elena. While Ayla is not reading or baking new recipes, she's busy making plans to become an international fashion designer. Ayla is a proud member of Casey National Elementary Honor Society, JPS Strains, Allstate Choir, The Word Center, and the Judah School of Performing Arts. Without further ado, Ayla Hatcher will recite the pledge.
Please stand for the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hatcher. And do you have any parents or family members who are with you tonight?
Oh, I have our Gigi, my mom, my sister.
Let's give them all a hand. And now I would like to invite Josiah Calvert to the podium to share with us words of encouragement. He's not here yet. Okay. Well, we will revisit that if he's able to make it. Before we start in a sandwich quorum, I do want to apologize to everyone who is here. We started a few minutes late. There were a couple of administrative things we needed to take care of. Let the record show that we have a quorum established. Board, we do have one change to the agenda that I would like to share with you. I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with one change to the personnel file, item B, the approval of teachers, counselors, librarians, and psychometrist staff. That change would reflect the removal of number 24 on page 99 and the removal of number 27 on page 119. So I've made a motion to approve the agenda with that change. If I could get a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes carry. Reading and approval of minutes. The minutes have been shared in advance. The board has had time to review them. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from the February 4th, 2020 board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes carry. Now we will turn it over to Dr. Green to share with us the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sevak, members of the board, or all of those staff, administrators, parents, community members who are with us here this evening or watching us livestream. We appreciate your attendance and attention to the meeting this evening. We'll begin at this time with a video from our instructional television production team with some highlights.
JPS district officials are closely monitoring the recent developments related to the flood stages of the Pearl River throughout the Jackson metropolitan area. We are prepared to respond to the needs of our students and families directly impacted by the floodwaters. The district is currently working with schools to identify students in need of uniforms, school supplies, and personal hygiene products. Once students have been identified, we will initiate services through our parent and family engagement department and McKinney-Vento homeless assistance program. Additionally, we have taken the necessary precautions to protect our buses, school and office properties in threat of flooding. Our transportation team has developed alternate routes and will not travel down unsafe flooded roads. We will continue to monitor the flood conditions with city, county, and state emergency officials and make decisions in the best interests of the safety for our school, community, and families. Congratulations to Power APAC students for winning a total of 209 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, a whopping 280% increase from the 55 awards they received last year. Forest Hill also had an outstanding performance with a total of 45 awards. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are presented by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to identify students with exceptional artistic and literary talent and present their remarkable work to the world. Congratulations to Marisa Woods. The Michelle Obama Early College High School Scholar was selected to attend the Disney Dreamers Academy. The academy was founded to give students with a dream the tools it takes to realize their potential. Students arrive at the Disney Dreamers Academy for a four-day event, and they return home with the motivation, guidance, and skills to help make their dreams come true. Marisa, already a small business owner at the tender age of 16, is the founder of Tootie's Trendy Treats. She considers herself a young entrepreneur and dreams of becoming one of the world's best pastry chefs. She is confident the expertise she will receive at the academy will equip her with the skills to make her dream come true. The Walt Disney Company, entertainer Steve Harvey, and Essence magazine host the event at Walt Disney World Resort. The academy streamers will interact with Disney cast members, celebrities, industry experts, and community leaders. Students will also enjoy fun activities at the resort's theme parks. Five school-community partnerships have been selected for the 2020 Mississippi Association of Partners in Education Awards. Span Elementary, Lumiere High School, Barack Obama Elementary, Chastain Middle School, and Arise to Read are among this year's Mississippi Awards REs. The Mississippi Association of Partners in Education presents these awards to recognize outstanding partnerships between schools and their communities. JPS is seeking the input of school parents and community members for the Comprehensive Needs Assessment Survey. The purpose of the survey is to examine multiple sources of data to identify the prioritized needs of the district as well as individual schools. The data will assist schools in monitoring and assessing the impact of programs and instruction on student achievement. To complete the survey, visit our website and click on "Take the Comprehensive Needs Assessment Survey for JPS Parents and Community Members." The deadline for completion is February 26. JPS elementary students are excited about STEM. A traveling STEM carnival hosted by the Mississippi School for Mathematics and Science was held at Kirksey Middle School, and approximately 1,300 of our energetic fourth graders were there to participate. STEM is a curriculum based on the idea of educating students in four specific disciplines: science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Students and faculty from the school presented hundreds of exhibits for the young scholars. JPS is continuing to make progress on multiple bond construction projects. For the latest news, updates on faces of completion, and bidding, please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us and click on "JPS Bond." For the latest information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us and connect with us on Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube.
As you can see, Board members, we've been pretty busy of late, continue to be. And thank you again to our instructional television production team just for producing this video, these highlights of all the wonderful work and the great accomplishments that are happening throughout JPS land. I want to just further emphasize the flooding event that many families are still grappling with, still dealing with, and just taking a moment to emphasize our supports for our scholars and families who have been impacted by the flooding. We know that many of our families are still dealing with this crisis, and we do want them to know that we're seeking to help them in any way that we can. And so if any of our scholars have missed a school day today because they were displaced or due to the flooding or any of that, please know that this is, his or her, this absence for him or her is excused. This is an excused absence, and so we understand that folks are working through those challenges and trying to, you know, get their lives situated. We also want to make sure that our families and parents know that if they are in need of school uniforms, of toiletries, and that sort of thing, that we can provide those items through our McKinney-Vento program. And for scholars who are temporarily displaced within the city limits of Jackson, transportation can be provided by the district. We'll pick up scholars who've been displaced from the following two locations: the Jackson Target, which is located at 6365 I-55, and at New Jerusalem Church, which is located at 5708 Old Canton Road. For anyone who might have any of those needs around toiletries or uniforms or transportation, any of that, please, 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 don't hesitate to reach out to our McKinney-Vento liaison. That's Dr. Faith Strong, and the number to reach her is 601-960-8885. And again, that's Dr. Faith Strong. She's our McKinney-Vento liaison, and she can be reached at 601-960-8885. We encourage you to reach out if we can be of assistance in any way. School board members, as we celebrated last week, School Board Member Recognition Week in Mississippi, which again was during the week of February 9th through the 15th, we want to formally acknowledge and pay tribute to you for your leadership and your dedication and contributions as school board members of the Jackson Public School District. Thank you for the many hours that you work on behalf of our scholars and their families and of this district. I don't think, if you've not sat in this seat, I don't think it's possible to fully comprehend the load that these folks have taken on and the work that they do, the brains, the knowledge, expertise that they bring, but also their use of their networks and their engagement in the communities, just to ensure that the issues that exist within our district and the opportunities that exist within our district and around the city and the state, that those are all brought to bear here in JPS. And that's largely due to just how awesome these individuals are. And I have the pleasure of working with them probably most closely or closer than most of our team members, and so I can attest to that. We appreciate you for all that you do and the way that you just see that every scholar in JPS receives the excellent education that they deserve. And so ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for our board members. Not laying it on thick just because you happen to be my boss, bosses. We have a treasure in our board here. I know many, many boards throughout the country, and we have a treasure in the talent and the hearts who have assembled here to do this work. And we have certificates for you that we'll provide to you after the meeting. At this time, I'm delighted, actually, am I delighted? Is Mr. Calvert, has he arrived? Has Mr. Calvert arrived?
No.
Okay. We have a treat for you, and as soon as he gets here, we'll try to get him up here. We've got a young man who's got some wonderful talents to share with us, and hopefully we'll be able to present him to you later in the meeting. We've been closely monitoring, board members and to community members, we've been closely monitoring our graduation rates for the 2018-2019 school year as compared to prior school years. At this time, our Assistant Superintendent for High Schools, Ms. Lakeisha Marshall-Thomas, will join us to provide an in-depth look at our graduation rates and share some of the strategies that we're using to increase those rates for the 2019-2020 school year and beyond, and just broadly to ensure that our young folks are getting the type of supports that they need to get through graduation and that we set them up for great success beyond. And so welcome, Ms. Lakeisha Marshall-Thomas.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Sevak, Vice President, Board Members. Thank you, Dr. Green. I will, at this time, go over some of the graduation rate data that will be used for the 1920 accountability cycle. So this data will be used at the end of this school year, which is 2020. Okay? 2019, 2020. Okay. Two objectives: to provide an overview of the district's graduation rate data for 2019-2020, and also to discuss efforts to improve the current graduation rates and dropout rates for all of our students. Of course, we are committed to the five commitments that you all have board-approved, which is a strong start. The pathway to graduation, of course, begins in kindergarten, and dropout prevention initiatives is a K-12 process. And also innovative teaching and learning, talented and empowered teams, joyful learning environments, and also a culture of accountability and excellence. So how is the graduation rate calculated and used for accountability? So first, we'll talk about how do we calculate the graduation rates. So we look at the number of students who graduated in four years from the school and district with a regular high school diploma or state-defined alternate diploma, and then we divide that by the numbers of students who entered four years earlier as first-time ninth graders. Any students who, so we make adjustments for deaths, any students who immigrate outside of the country, or any students who transfer in or out of the district. Also, any repeat ninth graders are kept in their original cohort. So even if they are repeating ninth grade, they still stay in their original cohort. And a regular high school diploma is classified as the standard high school diploma that's fully aligned to the state standards, the content standards. So just note that any completers, so any of our students with disabilities who complete with a certificate of attendance are not counted in our graduation rate. So how is this data used in our accountability model? The school and graduation rate is multiplied by two, and those points are added to the model. So graduation rate is worth 200 points, whereas other categories are worth either 100 or 50 points. In the calculation, students are assigned to the school and district of their longest enrollment. So if you transferred into the district as a ninth grader and you stayed here three years, and your last year you transferred out to another district, you're in our district the longest, we would keep the graduation rate for that particular student or the graduation credit for that student. So if he did or did not graduate, it will be impacted in the district of the longest enrollment. Okay? Graduation rate goals. So these are the goals that's also in our strategic plan and also spelled out in our dropout prevention plan. For 2021, which is our next checkpoint, the goal is to have a 77.1. Currently, for the 2019-2020 school year, our current graduation rate will be 75.1, which will be what we get at the end of this year. Okay? 75.1. Whereas the state's goal is 87.4, and you'll see where the state lies for 1920 on the next slide. Okay? At this time, we'll look at the graduation rates by schools, which will also include the state's graduation rate. The data here, you'll see that for the class of 2019, so this is the class that graduated last year. The graduation rate lasts one year. So we're just now getting credit for these students this current year, even though they graduated in 2019. Okay? If you see, we see some improvements at Forest Hill, Lanier, and Wingfield. You'll see a slight decline with Mara and Provin, and Jim Hill pretty much held steady as well. Callaway showed some decline, and we'll talk more about some things that we have in place for Callaway as well. But one thing that you'll notice that for the state of Mississippi for 2019-2020, the state's graduation rate is 85. The district is 75.1. But we also have two high schools that have exceeded the state's graduation rate of 85. That's Provin and Mara. Mara has 88, Provin has 85. And the national graduation rate average currently is 84.6. So the state has surpassed the national average, and we also have two schools that have surpassed the national average as well. Looking at our three-year graduation rates by subgroups. And what you'll see is we have all, the categories of all: black and African-American students, female students, male students, students with disabilities, English learners, and also our homeless students. And if you'll see that for our all and African-American, they are basically the same, 75.1, 75.4. Our females and males, there are some differences in the graduation rates between our females and our males in our district. Also, student with disabilities, one thing that you'll notice is in last year's graduating class, last year's cohort, the graduation rate was 24.5. If you notice, a really good, a really impressive gain of 32.5. So student with disabilities, the graduation rate has improved from 24.5 to 32.5. What you'll see in parentheses are the graduation rates for the state, and I just failed to explain that. The district is first and followed by the state's in parentheses. And our English learners, you'll see a slight improvement as well from 53 to 55. One thing you'll notice that for our homeless students, you'll see a decline in the graduation rates. From 2018-2019, the graduation rate was 68.2, and it dropped to 46. So we've been combing through our data, figuring out, okay, what happened with our homeless population? One thing that we noticed that in 2018-2019, we had 380 students that were coded as homeless, whereas in 1920, we only had 117. So we think there may have been some miscoding with the students that we actually identified as homeless that were truly not, because you see such a decline in the numbers. Next are our dropout rate goals. If you notice that the state has not issued any dropout rate goals, but we as a district decided on these goals that, over the next years up until 2025, that our goal will be 16.5. So for the 2019-2020 school year, our current dropout rate is 18.7, which is a slight increase from what we had the previous year of 18.1. And you always want your dropout rates to decrease. So who's considered a dropout? There are four main categories for students who may be considered a dropout or have a state code as a dropout. So a student who's withdrawn from school or no longer attends school. So over a period of time, those students will eventually be dropped. If no school or school district picks those students up, those students remain in the cohort until four years later. If they never transfer to another district and that district actually picks those students up, they remain in our cohort. We experience a lot of that. Also, any fifth-year students, so if we have students that don't graduate in four years and they return for a fifth year, those students are also dropouts. Any students who are coded whereabouts unknown are considered dropouts. And any students who go on to pursue GED options are also considered dropouts. Now, we talked earlier about students with disabilities who may get a certificate of completion. Those students are not considered a dropout force, but they're not counted in the graduation rate of those diplomas. By schools, increases in Forest Hill, Lanier, and Wingfield. And again, as I stated earlier, you'll see a slight increase in the district's dropout rate from 18.3 to 18.7. So that was a national survey that was conducted on why do students drop out of school? So at this time, we'll actually look at the data that was gathered for the students that were part of this survey. And what we found while they're pulling it up, some of the same things that the students stated in this survey, as our graduation coaches and our dropout prevention coordinator are going out to find out why our students are not coming back or trying to get those students back in schools, these are the same reasons that we are being provided or given by the students as well. And you'll see that the largest percentage, the largest category, are for students who actually gap behind or low grades. For us, it's not necessarily the low grades, it's students who have become disengaged because of state tests. So exit exams exist, so students must pass an exit exam in order to graduate. So one thing that we've seen is the students have become disengaged because they've not been successful on these exams. Also, some students thought that the GED option was easier for them. They didn't like school. And many of our students are having to take care of other siblings or other family members. So at this time, we'll talk about actually what's being done in the district to sustain and improve our graduation rate and also decreasing our dropout rates. So if you'll notice here that the state has given additional options. We talked about earlier that students must pass an end-of-course exam in order to meet graduation requirements. Well, the state has given other options that are available to students that would allow them to be used in lieu of the state exam. So of course, the first option is for students to actually just pass the MAP assessment right out. And the four areas are Algebra I, English II, Biology I, and US History. The second option, if the student is not successful, is that if the student has a 17 on the ACT in that sub-score area, they can use that in lieu of the state exam for that particular test. Also, students may fail a test by one or two points. Then what we use is something called a concordance table that will allow them to go ahead and meet graduation requirements if they miss the test by one or two points, if they have the appropriate grade. So the higher the grade, the more points you can miss the test by. Option four is a composite scale score of 646 or above. So that means I take all four of your tests, I take an average. If that average is 646 or greater, we can use that in lieu of the test. And then we have two additional options, well, actually, three additional options. The students can enroll in dual-credit courses and earn a C or better in that particular course area, or they can take the ASFAB plus obtain industry certification. And ASFAB, of course, is the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. That's the test that you have to take in order to get into the Armed Services. So if the student earns a 36 or above on ASFAB and then obtain industry certification, and we have several industry certification programs being provided at our CDC, then those students, again, could use those in lieu of the state exams. And the last option is the ACT Work Keys Assessment along with industry certification. So just to look at some of the strategies, and I'll only talk about just a few of those. One thing that we do is, we actually have prescriptive classes that are available for students who are missing state exams. So for example, if I'm a senior and I'm working on English II, then what we've done is, we've scheduled those students together so that they can receive additional support in preparations for the retest. Also, it provides additional resources, additional time for them to be prepared for the ACT. So we talked about them being able to make a 17 on the ACT in lieu of the test. So it allows to provide some very, very prescriptive interventions and remediations for those students if they're grouped together. Also, we provide face-to-face academic counseling sessions. So one thing that we started two years ago was having face-to-face academic counseling sessions with the parents and the students to explain exactly what's their progress on meeting graduation requirements, and if you're not meeting graduation requirements, what are your options? What would be the best option for you? And then from there, we create plans for those students. This is an example of one of our graduation rate trackers. So these are maintained by our graduation coaches. So we talked about those students who are already classified as dropouts in the cohort. So one thing that they have to do is, they actually have to reach out to all of their students that are classified as dropouts and try to reengage them into coming back into school. So what we do is, we work out a plan, whether that's credit recovery, that's test remediation, that's providing additional resources. So for example, this is one of our high schools that right now, even with them not having, these are... So for example, this is one of our high schools that right now, even with them not having, these are, so right now they have forty-five students that are classified as dropouts. Of those forty-five students, sixteen right now have not met graduation requirements. They're still in school, but they've just not met graduation requirements. Eleven of those students, there are other options that the school is working with them on, and eighteen of those students are currently enrolled in a dual-credit course at Heinz Community College. So those eighteen students finished their courses in March. So those eighteen students will now roll over to on track. So it'll be from two eighty-five, it'll roll up to two eighty-five plus eighteen. Okay, if you notice, we got them coded as yet, and thus, every student is, is considered a yet student. We don't call them, you know, dropouts, we don't call them non-graduates, we call them yet, because that means that you've not met graduation requirements yet. Um, and just a few additional strategies, of course, we have credit recovery for students who may lack course credits. We also, um, ensure that we have dual-credit opportunities for our students. A lot of those students, we even transport them to, um, the community colleges to take the, um, the nighttime courses. Any students that may have serious credit needs, of course, you, you all know, we have REIT, we have the Reengagement Center. And those students receive, you know, the course credits they need. They also have the support to help them prepare for the state tests a- as well. Also, um, we have the schools themselves, we talked about the ASFAB. Well, the school offers multiple opportunities for the students to actually take the ASFAB right at the school. So right now, um, in March, we know, February, we've already offered the ASFAB three times already at, at the high schools. And we talked about Callaway High School with them showing a decline in their enrollment. One thing, um, Callaway is our ELs, EL high school, so all of our EL, our English learners, all of our English learners' high school students attend Callaway. So what we're doing now is we're looking at some very, um, specialized supports for the, for those students. Um, last year, we had ten EL students who did not complete graduation requirements within the four years. So what we're doing now is looking at additional options for, um, for our EL population. This is just an example of one of the graduation, um, coaches tracker, where they actually track and keep up with how well they're doing in their courses, how well they're doing on the ACT school, on their ACT, how well they're doing on, um, on the, on their state assessments. So we monitor this, um, on a monthly basis. When retest scores come in, those are updated. When course grades come in, we update.
Oh, well, I'm interested in, excuse me for not having my page, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Uh, you mentioned the different options that our students have to graduate. And there were several categories on this wonderfully prepared presentation. I'm gonna look one more time to try to find my page. Yeah, it was a chart, and, um, I just wondered of the options, and you may not have this data right before you. That's it, thank you. Thank you, Dr. The graduation options, they could pass the traditional test or score more than seventeen on the ACT you've identified for, as well as others, the dual-credit, the ASFAB. Do you have a ballpark figure of, of the percentage of our students who do take advantage of these alternate ways to reach their graduation?
I don't know the specific numbers, but we have a large number of our students who take advantage of number three. Option three is with a concordance table, which means that the students fail the test, um, within, you know, one or two points. We have some, we have several students who may have a B in the class and fail the, the test by maybe four points. And those sto- students are able to use the concordance, um, option in order to, um, meet, meet the grad option.
So you felt confident in our students. Under the tutelage of our counselors, they are fully aware of these ways that they can graduate.
Yes, ma'am, which is the reason that we actually started the, to have the academic counseling sessions to ensure that our parents and our students are fully aware of the options that are available to them.
Thank you.
One of the things that the team is committed to is, is also, um, uh, perhaps the same flowchart or something similar, posting that on our website, just as another reminder for folks who've been through these sessions with our counselors and, uh, graduation coaches, just to make sure they, they know, they're aware of the processes. And, and do we do the, um, graduation plans for everyone or just those who may, might be in danger?
Just the students who are in danger because of course credits, failed courses, or state tests. So other students are on track, so the only plans we work with those students are on, um, is gr- college enrollment, college applications, scholarship applications.
Each of the high schools has, um, a coach?
Yes, ma'am.
Which junior college? Is that Heinz or UCA?
As far as the, the dual-credit courses, yes, ma'am, Heinz Community College. And for some of the, some of the, um, for some of the courses and also for some of the high schools, we actually offer the courses in the buildings. Cause they have the teachers that meet the credentials to teach the courses.
This feels like increased, uh, attention to this by, uh, by the team, leadership team and everybody supporting you. So this is really good news.
Thank you, thank you.
I, this is a bigger picture question, looking at, first of all, thank you for, this is really well done, just the level of detail and, uh, this particular data. Looking at the subgroup analysis, um, should we be thinking about integrating, um, subgroup goals into our strategic plan, particularly where we've got large gaps from between where certain subgroups are and where certain subgroups are at the state level?
Should we? Uh, so the, the great thing is, we are tracking this and are happy to share and track it openly, you know, transparently. Do we need to include it in the, the strategic plan? I'm, I'm not convinced that we do. I think along with, there's several other data points that we're, we're watching very closely, that we've got plans and resources aligned to, to ensure that those numbers, um, move dramatically. Uh, to the extent that you see that happening, I don't know that it needs to be in the strategic plan. To the extent that you don't see it happening, I, I would welcome the push to name it more boldly in a plan or someplace, um, so that we can, um, you know, because one of the pieces of, one of the benefits of having it named in the strategic plan is it's, it's, it's out there. Everyone knows that it's a goal. And so perhaps there's some more work that we can do just to share the goals and the, and the, um, um, or, and perhaps to identify specific, uh, targets for those, um, um, uh, subgroups.
Right.
Uh, I'm happy to, to work with the team and, and figure out, you know, what can we do? What can, what is accomplished by including something like that in the strategic plan? And, and is there another way to accomplish the same? Identifying specific targets, communicating those targets very clearly, and communicating and tracking along the way, the work that we're doing in order to address those, um, and see the kinds of, uh, outcomes that we wanna see.
And, and Dr. Sebag, because, um, the subgroups are part of the federal, um, mandate, we're monitoring those students anyway as part of the federal requirements. Um, if you notice, um, the schools that are, that have federal designations, a lot of those designations are due to their subgroup's performance. So it's, it's, um, that's one thing.
You can't get away from it.
Right.
That's, that's helpful, and, and it was, it was truly a question in terms of, in the wor- your responses, I think, is, is, is helpful. It wasn't, there wasn't any, it was not an implicit recommendation in there, it was more of just, um, a reflection on the data out loud. Thank you, board members, any other questions?
No, this is great.
One of the things that, um, as we, uh, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Marshall Thomas for your work and, and your leadership in this and, um, helping us to better consume the data and the, the work behind these data, um, points. One of the things that Ms. Marshall Thomas noted that I think bears repeating, um, graduation, um, planning and, um, the efforts around graduation don't start in the senior year. Don't even start in the junior year. That all begins with a strong start from the very beginning. All the attitudes that we're, well, for sure, the skills and knowledge and, and all of that that we're teaching, but as well, the attitudes, the dispositions that young people either gain or don't that lead them towards the level of perseverance and endurance and stamina over time, uh, especially as the content gets more rigorous. And so, um, it's just, it's, it's all our work and certainly not just our high school friends. As much as we beat up on them, uh, it's not just their, their work. So thank you, um, Ms. Marshall Thomas, and to all of our, uh, secondary, uh, leaders and for all of those who get the fact that graduation begins with a, and a strong start. And we have some folks?
We have a few of our graduation coaches here, so I would like for, um, them to just wave their hand. I think there's Mr. Connors from Wingfield, who, if you notice, had the largest graduation rate increase. Let him, Mr. Connors, let me see who you are. Also, our dropout prevention coordinator is Mr. Terrell, so he's been going out and bringing them back to school.
These folks are hustling, they're working hard to make it happen. And, um, very proud of the early signs of improvement in this area. So, um, we'll, we'll commit to keeping this data in front of you, board members and, and community members. Um, I wanna say, Mr. Talia. Uh, wanna now, uh, as you know, board members, we, oh geez, sorry. As you know, we annually provide a balanced, uh, budget to the Board of Trustees as required by law. Um, and, and although we've been faced with and are faced with numerous fiscal challenges and, um, and all kinds of other just challenges in the work that are oftentimes costly, uh, we do wanna make sure that, um, we remain fiscally sound as a district and that we are strategic in our, um, in our planning and our allocation of resources. At this time, invite, um, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Sherilyn Miller, to join us and share more about our budgeting process this year.
Thank you, Dr. Green, Dr. Sebag, members of the board. Um, this is one of my favorite times of the year, and so, uh, wanted to just give you a brief, um, overview of the twenty twenty-one budget process as well as a few updates on the current year budget. Okay. Okay. So tonight, I'll provide highlights of, as I said, our current and up- upcoming fiscal year budget and then an overview of the budget process for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And then just some next steps as we go over the next, uh, several months toward, um, budget adoption in June. Our current year budget for nineteen twenty, um, as we report to you monthly, the, um, financial reporting, and I think I mentioned this at the last mo- ma- last meeting, that our district maintenance revenue seems to be trending toward our adopted budget, I'm comfortable with our other funds also trending toward adopting, adopted budget. Avalorum is one of those areas that we absolutely watch in very intently. If you recall during the budget process, we, we received a slight increase in our assessed value, so we are watching very closely to see the collections on Avalorum. I'm really happy to, to report at the end of January of twenty twenty, our Avalorum collections for district maintenance were about fifteen point five million compared to ten point one at the same point in last year. Of course, we have, um, March becau- is the last month that we have our big collections, and so we will monitor that, and pretty much at the end of March, we can say, um, where we'll be for the rest of the year for Avalorum. Um, this year, unfortunately, due to a timing issue, uh, that was not under our control, it was the reporting of the tax co- assessor's office to the tax collector, uh, there was, there will be some impact on, uh, not only the district, but also the city as well as the county. And so a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars, and, and Mr. Stokes provided that exact dollar amount, is, uh, anticipated revenue that we will not receive this year. Again, that was not anything due to us, it was just a timing issue of how they got the information to the tax collector's office this year. Um, as we talk about expenditures, of course, so there are some, um, unanticipated expenditures that we will have to address. Probably the largest, uh, being our charter school payment. Uh, this year, we budgeted, if you recall, five million dollars for our charter school payment. This year, we did have an increase in students, um, a little bit more than we projected. And, uh, so our charter school payment this year was five million, five hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and four cents. And that was to five charter schools for a one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one students. We, um, are being faced with some additional needs in transportation for, uh, the end of the year, about, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Of course, in facilities, we always have unanticipated expenditures, some we budget for. And of course, uh, as we have always talked about, HVAC and emergency repairs, pro- approximately another hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the Michelle Obama Early College High School has an approximate thirty thousand dollars of expenditures that we will be looking at for this year. And then, um, as we continue to work very diligently and closely with our federal programs, folks, um, we have had some cleanup there, that we've had some expenditures that were formerly paid in federal programs that we will have to pick up in district maintenance. And that's been through our, um, monitoring visits and site visits given to us by MDE. Um, we have a couple of other things that we, uh, have anticipated, uh, we, we did not anticipate that we will have to address this year. Um, we've got some bills that, for grass collectors and gas, grass contractors and garbage collections that were not submitted timely for last year that we will have to address. Uh, we've worked with the Facilities Department to ensure that all of those are submitted to us timely so that we can close the year out. Um, of course, my, our goal is to make sure that we close the year out as quickly as we can after June, um, thirty, but also to make sure that we have all our bills paid so it won't affect our next year budget. Um, as I said, the, the revenue and expenditures for the major funds are trending toward budgets. If you look, um, the, one of the biggest numbers that we watch are, are percent of revenue collected versus the percent of expenditures. So for district maintenance, you can see as, as of December of nineteen, forty-three percent of our revenue was, had been collected compared to forty-one point nine percent of our expenditures. As long as that number, the expenditure number stays lower than the revenue collection, I'd like to see that. That means we are trending in the right direction. Um, if you'll notice though, in exceptional education, alternative athletics and vocation, and also JROTC, some of those expenditures are higher than revenue, but they receive allocations from district maintenance that we do basically because of timing. So by the end of the year, those will be on track. They, um, they did, they, those funds do receive some individual revenue, but also they get revenue from, uh, from eleven-twenty district maintenance. Child nutrition is a little behind, but I'm, uh, confident that working with Mr. Rowe and his team and Ms. Robinson, uh, child nutrition will come back in line. They are one of those funds that, uh, we don't worry about, they are very healthy and, and have a very healthy fund balance. As we talk more about twenty twenty-one, uh, I do wanna signal though that we are, um, progressing well. We are, we've been planning, uh, as you are aware, we'd start this process sometime in October, November. But we do have some challenges that, um, we will be facing this year. One of the good things is, uh, of course, as we talked about Avalorum collections, um, we are projecting potentially another three hundred thousand dollars that we will receive in additional, uh, assessed value, I mean, um, Avalorum collections due to assessed values for twenty twenty-one. However, we, um, will have a loss of revenue for our sixteen-section leases. One of our major, um, less lease holders, um, Entergy. Their lease expires in October and they have paid their last payment. And so we are working aggressively to try to get new lessees in our, in our sixteen-section properties. Of course, our properties are primarily located, um, south in, in, around the Gallatin Street, um, Julianne Street area, so we are plagued with some challenges. But we do have some good folks who are coming in, so aggressively working with new tenants, trying to bring those in. But however, um, I am projecting some flat revenue in other areas. The OFE plan that this board approved, we are anticipating, uh, somewhere around five hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars in savings. But then there are some potential, of course, um, challenges with MAEP. MAEP is based on enrollment and then, of course, not being fully funded. We are, are anticipating a teacher pay increase, there's still been some conversation, uh, in the legislature about that and how that will, um, how that will play out for us for the year. Don't anticipate receiving any final information on that until close to the end of the session. But we, of course, we plan, as we did last year, for teachers to rec- receive that pay increase and anyone else that we see that that may occur. Um, health insurance, uh, we talked about this, um, kinda late in the year last year that we received, all state agencies received late notice that- that we received, all state agencies received late notice that we would receive about a 3% increase in January. Um, what we have been kind of told is to go ahead and plan for that 3% increase for the whole year, every year from, from Blue Cross Blue Shield. And that's not on our employees, that's on the employer's side. So, we're estimating, uh, about a $700,000 increase there. Um, the challenge with the charter school payments, of course, we've grown from, um, in 2015, 2016, we had 227 students that we paid $595,000 for. And as I said, this year, we paid for 1,831 students, 5.5 million dollars. Um, it's always a challenge to, to know where this number is, is going to lie. There are two additional charters on the bubble. We're not quite sure about where they're going to be for next year and if they're going to even open, but potentially we could look at a payment of about 6.1 million dollars is what I have estimated right now based on where we are this year and the growth that we've seen since 2015, 2016. So, just to give you a, an idea of the timeline, as I said, we start back in the fall and, um, I enjoyed this process. I don't know if my compadres on the senior leadership team did as much as I did, but we had them do something new this year. Um, they got with their staffs and identified budget projects that were priority for them and then we evaluated them all. Uh, there were no sacred cows and everybody got to do their own evaluation and prioritize them. So, just for example, some of the budget projects that came out of this leadership team, um, and how they were prioritized, updating the bus fleet for next year and the white fleet, which is our trucks, cars and everything for, for our other maintenance workers and our, of other employees, at a cost of about a million five. Uh, the purchase of a backup generator for our computer systems downtown in the event that we have, you know, electrical outages, about $100,000. There continues to be, um, this push to support our third grade students who need additional support in the summer. Um, textbooks, of course, as, uh, always needing to look at those and supporting the new adoptions that we did this year. Of course, the facility repairs that, um, Bond Issue has done great work toward helping us get there, but of course, we always need additional, um, facilities repairs. And updating our staff computers. I think we've talked about this for a couple of years, that we have, um, we have the, the unique ability to, to replace student computers with a lot of our federal dollars, but the, the fact is staff computers, um, we've gone woefully behind in updating those. And so, those are some of the projects that the senior leadership team identified and, and, and ranked according to, um, things that they would like to see in this upcoming budget. We are also identifying some strategic priorities, um, that will address the district and the strategic, the five-year strategic plan. We are working on our enrollment and staffing projections so that we can finalize those. We are, um, we started with the OFE schools and then we'll start, we'll continue on with the rest of the district. And then we are continuing to work on our revenue and expenditure projections. Continuing with our timeline, we will, uh, start meeting, uh, very deliberately with our finance committee between March and May. Uh, we have tentatively set the public hearing, as you know, by state statute, we are required to have one public hearing. Tentatively, it's set for June 8th, uh, 2020 at 5 o'clock PM and then the budget adoption on June 16th, um, at 2020. We have some next steps though. We will continue to finalize our enrollment plans and our staffing plans, continue to finalize and fine tune our revenue and expenditures. We will be developing a balanced budget, as Dr. Green says, we, um, not only are we required to, we really take pleasure in making sure that it's presenting to you balanced when you first see it. Budget adoption and also finalizing the 1920 budget, we do have to provide that to you by September of 2020 to approve. So, those are the, that's the budget process for us this year. Um, I, very much more in detail this year, we're doing a lot more planning about the future and so, um, that's where we are for, at this point.
Before, um, we turn it over and see if there are any questions from board members, I do want to just, um, uh, kind of emphasize and, and further explain that, um, a lot of the, a few slides back, a lot of the, um, the prioritized kind of expenditures that the, the team talked through were, how do we just keep operating? And how do we ensure that we can operate, computers, buses, that sort of thing? As you know, we have a, a robust, uh, strategic plan that we're living into and so we're, we're also thinking critically and, and, you know, uh, to the extent possible about how to utilize, uh, current, uh, people resources to do a bit of that work and, uh, we're increasing our efforts around, um, the, uh, thoughtful use of federal dollars and, um, uh, uh, fundraising, basically for private dollars, uh, in, in order to do some of the new and more strategic, uh, work that we've, we've outlined over the next, uh, four years, we'll say beyond this school year. So, just wanted to further, you know, underscore that these are hugely important expenditures and if we do them, they will keep us afloat, but not necessarily position us in the strategic manner that we're, um, also seeking to position ourselves. And that'll be done through, uh, the use of federal and, and private dollars. Are there any questions, board members?
I don't have a question, but just to comment, uh, that perhaps by the board's, um, August, September, next year retreat, that we could spend some time understanding how the charter schools impacts our work and as we will continue to move up a letter grade, uh, we want to be ready to not have to pay that. When, when we meet that place where we don't have to pay out so much money, I want us to begin thinking about what that looks like.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I was just curious, what is our charter exposure? And by, what I mean by that is, so you mentioned there's 1,831 students and there's, there's a figure associated with every student.
Correct.
Um, I also know that, I, I think there, some of the schools are still adding grades.
Yes.
And there, you mentioned two that are coming online and then they will add grades, I assume.
Yes.
Over time. So, all in, assuming those two schools are fully enrolled, assuming that those other schools finished their, their startup period and are fully enrolled, what is the number of students, assuming that none, no others come online?
Um, many of them are already, have already exceeded where their original application said they were going to be. Um, if those other two schools come online for 2021, the projection that I have is about 2,311 students. Um, that is counting 450 of the two schools that are on the bubble, which is Revive Prep, which is a K8, and Republic High, which is 912. Um, what has been interesting to note is that, um, one of them, Reimagined Prep, is their, their application actually had them capped at 450, 440, I'm sorry, 440. Um, this year, they're at 538. So, um, trying to understand the, the process of how that has occurred. Of course, those applications, a number of those applications were done in 2014, 2015, 2015, 2016, and they did the projections out five years and they have just seen those numbers, um, increase. And I have not been able to get a handle on, is there a stopping point or, or anything in that nature? So, um, many of them, uh, again, have exceeded, um, Midtown has exceeded theirs. They were supposed to be at 208, they're at 260. So, um, don't really have a sense of where the stopping point is. So, as much as I could, you know, evaluate the applications that have been submitted, it does appear as though, though, they're not necessarily being held to the enrollment projections that they have been provide, that they provided in the application. So.
Okay. So, sounded like the best estimate we have right now is 2311.
2311 is the best estimate I have right now. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And now, at this time, I'm delighted to invite Mr. Josiah Calvert of Bailey AIPAC Middle School to join us here at the podium. Um, he will read an excerpt from one, one of, did you hear me? One of his books, uh, and share with us his love and inspiration for literature. And Mr. Calvert, uh, you have the pleasure, I believe you were also prepared to give us some words of inspiration? If you would like to, sir, we would love to hear both of those, your words of inspiration as well as an excerpt from your book. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And Dr. Green, I've got a little bit of background on Mr. Calvert.
You want to share?
That I think we would all love to hear. Um, so, uh, Josiah Calvert is the son of Pastor Maurice and Dr. LaShonda Calvert of Jackson, Mississippi. He is a seventh grade honor student at Bailey AIPAC Middle School. Mr. Calvert is an honorable student, an accomplished visual arts student of Power AIPAC. He is a first place winner of the 2018-2019 Mississippi Farm to School Art Contest and his winning art piece was featured in the Mississippi Farm to School Network 2019-2020 Calendar. It was the 2018-2019 T-shirt logo for the Mississippi Farm to School Network as well. Mr. Calvert is a national winner in the celebrating art competition where his art will be featured in the 2019-2020 Celebration Art Book Publication. He's a published author and artist of several books, including The Three Little Monkeys, Bam Bam's Book of Short Stories and Poems, and The Three Little Monkeys Part Two, in which he has received numerous special awards and accolades. He won first place in the 2019-2020 Reading Fair Nonfiction category at Bailey AIPAC. He won first place in the Physics category for sixth to eighth grade Science Fair 2019-2020. Mr. Calvert also was a participant in the recent District Science Fair Sixth through Twelfth Grade, where he won third place in the Physics category. He is also a percussion member of the Bailey AIPAC Band and a drummer and committed team member of the Restoration Church Worship Team. He enjoys playing the drums, singing, drawing, reading, writing stories, poems and songs. He also enjoys spending time with his Grammy and he loves playing with Nerf guns in his spare time.
That's massive.
Josiah Calvert, take us away.
So, I'm going to read the story first and then words of encouragement. As all three girls stood there preparing to answer their questions, suddenly both boys and girls heard a big boom, 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 boom. They turned around to see where the noises were coming from. When they turned, they saw nothing, absolutely nothing that would explain the loud noises. They nervously turned back around, they saw the same thing, nothing. The boys remembered that they had heard the same noises earlier in the deeper end of the woods, so they all built the courage to run outside, see if they could find anything or anyone. When they went outside, they heard the noise again, boom, boom, boom. Then again, boom, boom, boom. All six, Jack, Cameron, Henry, Cammy, Jackie and Henrietta screamed, ran and grasped for breath as the noises got louder and louder. Boom, 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 boom. The six monkeys suddenly, suddenly stopped and looked everywhere, but they saw nothing. Then suddenly, they all began to scream and yell. "Oh, no," they, they all exclaimed. "No way," the boys said. "This can't be happening," said the girls. "We can't believe this," she said. "Someone took our plan again," cried Henry, Jack and Cameron. "Uh, here we go again," said the boys. And the words encouragement. "To the teachers in the JPS School District, I am here to encourage you to keep doing the great job you're doing. It is students like me who appreciate all your hard work and your efforts to promote clarity, understanding and additional information for each subject matter. It does our hearts well when we don't understand something being taught and you so diligently take the time to explain what it is that is confusing us. Our parents work hard to send us to school and want the best for us, so on behalf of my parents, we thank you all for what you do to make sure that I, that I and every other JPS student have the best and strongest education possible. And to the students of the JPS School District, I am here to encourage you to put forth your best effort to be the best student you can possibly be. We can all work together to make our schools A and B level schools. Let's do all that we can to show courtesy to our fellow classmates, respect to our principals, respect to our teachers and their entire staff. Let's work together to give JPS schools the push they need to make JPS a role model district."
Yes.
Uh, and Mr. Calvert, do you have parents or family here with you today?
Yes, sir.
Could we ask them to stand so we can recognize? Thank you. And now we've got, uh...
Oh, I have a question.
Where can we purchase your books?
Um, Lulu.
I'm sorry. Lulu?
So, for those who may be watching, that's Lulu.com is the place where you can go and purchase these books.
I can't move for my grandson.
Are there other authors in the room? Don't we have a couple of other folks who've, who've written?
You mean young folks?
Any of us. Right. Right. Published authors. Any other published, published authors, if you please stand. Just want to, want to make sure that Mr. Calvert knows that he's, um, he's got some good company here of other published authors. Thank you, Mr. Calvert and to your, your family. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Um, we're definitely blessed by, um, you sharing your, your great talents with us and this brother's doing some of everything. I don't know how you all keep up with him. He's, he's a Renaissance man. With that, board members, I turn the meeting.
Uh, we have a presentation for you, sir.
For me?
I'll like this.
Perks of the job.
Yay!
I'm getting them for my grandson.
How old is your grandson?
Is it autographed?
They are.
All right.
And we need to order these for our elementary and middle schools. M, 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 Ms. Miller, we're adding to your budget.
That's so exciting.
My goodness.
All right. Well, thank you. That's a, always the best part of our board meeting is when we get to hear from our students. Um, at this time, um, I'm going to turn orders. There are no, uh, public participation general comments, um, so we will move on to our consent agenda items for finance. Uh, board members, materials were sent in advance. Is there a motion?
I move that we, um...
Can't get your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we, uh, accept the consent agenda items finance, A, recommendation to dispose of surplus property.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, uh, the consent agenda item for finance. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes carry. Now, we will move on to our consent agenda items for personnel. Board members who received this information in advance, we did make one change at the start of the meeting. Uh, could I get a motion?
Move that we approve consent agenda items personnel with the, uh, change, uh, from the beginning of the meeting.
Second?
Uh, Dr. Luckett has moved, Dr. Harrison has seconded the motion to approve the consent agenda items for personnel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes carry. Uh, board members, our next item is consideration to hold an executive session. Uh, could I get a motion?
I move that we close the meeting to consider holding an executive session.
Second?
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, uh, the motion to approve, uh, closing the meeting to consider the holding of an executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all for being here tonight.